All the different advice that we've received and as that advice has changed or evolved throughout the pandemic due to the different variants that we've had to contend with. So I've, for myself, for my own purposes, I've boiled it down. So what I think are the kind of the core really important principles. And I wanted to share that before we started meeting. I think it's, it's now very scientifically demonstrated that getting vaccinated is very helpful. It's helpful to you in that it reduces the chance you'll get the virus. But if you do get the virus, it certainly reduces the chance that you will have a significant illness resulting from it. So it's important to get vaccinated. If, if you have children and your children qualify for vaccines, it's important to consider getting your children vaccinated. And I would encourage you to get your information from a trusted and reliable source as you make that decision. One of the things that we can all do is reduce our contacts, reduce the number of people that we are interacting with on a day to day basis as best we can. Stay home if you are not feeling well, or if you have any symptoms and follow Algoa Public Health's guidance as it relates to isolating. If you are a positive or if anybody in your house is a positive. And just as important, be patient and kind with one another as best as we can. This has been a very trying two years for all of us. And many different people are contending with many different things in their life. And the pandemic is an extra, certainly significant stressor on top of that. So let's all dig deep and work hard to have patience for one another, help one another as and when we can, and be kind to each other. So get vaccinated, get your children vaccinated, reduce your contacts as best as you can. Stay home if you're not feeling well and remember to, to as best you can be kind to each other. So before we start the, the meeting, Madam Clerk, I want to recognize that we are in the Huron Robinson Treaty territory. Land in which we are gathered, traditional land of the Nishnabi. It is the home of Garden River First Nation, Batschewana First Nation, the historic Sioux State Marine Mayday Council. I want to also recognize that the head office in the Sineady Creek First Nation is here and the great work that the Urban Indigenous Friendship Center does in our community. This territory is commonly and historically known as Bauting. I appreciate it being shared with us. Madam Clerk, if we can start the meeting?
Under Agenda Item 1, motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Garty, yourselves at the minutes of regular council meeting of December 13, 2021 be approved.
All favor.
And under Agenda Item 3, Declaration of pecuniary interest, I haven't been advised of any.
Any declarations council not yet declared? Seeing none?
Okay, under Agenda Item 5.1, Subproclamation for Crime Stoppers Month.
Okay, I have that proclamation here. Whereas each year during the month of January, we celebrate the success of crime stopper programs. Whereas since its inception, Crime Stoppers Association Marine Algoa District is responsible for almost 4,500 arrests. Nearly eight million in drugs seized and four million in recovered property. Whereas the foundation of Crime Stoppers remains the partnership between the community, law enforcement and the media. Crime Stoppers work to educate the public and create awareness of illegal activities in an effort to promote safety, empowerment and inclusion. Whereas this year's theme, Stop the Crime of Human Trafficking, is more than a call to action. It represents an opportunity to increase awareness of this devastating crime that targets people from all backgrounds. Crime Stoppers accepts tips on sex and labor trafficking and wants people to be aware they can safely and honestly report crime through their toll free line and web tip option. Whereas Crime Stoppers continues to be a success due to all the tipsters who entered into the nonviolence program. Along with the support of police and media partnerships, volunteers, staff and donors. And therefore, I, Mayor Christian Provanzen, am the mayor of the city, Sioux State Marine, hereby proclaim January 2022 as Crime Stoppers Month. Congratulate Crime Stoppers of Sioux State Marine, the district of Algoa, for 37 years, a successful operation in our community. Thank you.
Agenda Item 5.2 is the Christmas Lighting Awards. And Counselor Scott is going to announce the winners. And there's also a PowerPoint showing photos of the award winning lighting.
Great, go ahead, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Christmas Lighting Awards Program, co-sponsored by PUC, promotes and encourages community involvement and recognizes the efforts of residents who light up their homes and businesses in the spirit of the season. On behalf of the Christmas Lighting Awards Committee, I would like to thank the residents and businesses for the work they put into their displays. It was truly a wonderful experience viewing all the work that went into bringing a little cheer and joy to our community. I would also like to thank PUC for their continued support of this program. The week of December 20th, committee members drove in their own vehicles to judge and review this year's nominations. Committee members include Counselor Corey Gardi, Counselor Sandra Hollingsworth, Counselor Matthew Scott, Counselor Lisa Vezo Allen, Tina Bastus, Lindsay Marshall, Stephen McCoy and Cindy Renone. I am pleased to announce the following residences and businesses that were chosen as winners in the city's 2021 Christmas Lighting Awards Program. So first up for the residential winners, we have Ward 1. First place was the Klebis Residence on Texas Avenue. In second place, we had the Buckin Residence, 87 Crestwood Avenue. Okay, clicked the wrong button there. For Ward 2, first place, we had the Matthews Residence at 169 Albert Street West. In second place, I don't know if I'll be able to predict, is it frantic residence? I hope I'm, I hope I'm saying that properly, that 149 McGregor Avenue. For Ward 3, first place, we had the Eklund Residence, 955 North Street. Second place, Parel Aveccio Residence, 180 Pentagon Boulevard. Ward 4, first place, Taylor Residence, 506 Third Line West. Second place, Bernabucci Residence, 64 Laura Street. Ward 5, first place, Schmidt and Hill Residence, 23 Pretoria Hill. Second place was the Pista Residence, 31 Harris Street. And for the businesses, first place, we have Neil's Country Farm and Market. And second place, we had the Cooperators. And we will be following up with each winner to drop off plaques and PUC credits. Once again, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the residents of Sioux State Marine for their participation. And I just want to speak on behalf of myself, not the other counselors and the other members, but I always enjoy getting to do this every year. It was a really awesome committee, gives you a chance to drive and check out the city in areas that you don't usually experience. A lot of streets I didn't realize existed or streets that, you know, I don't think I've ever actually been down. So it's really cool to see, it's nice. This year I got to bring my son along in the car and pointed out all the Christmas lights to him and he really enjoyed that. So I think this is a great program and I'm always happy to see the participation from the residents.
And under Agenda Item 5.3, Future Sioux State Marine Update, Travis Anderson, the Director of Tourism and Community Development is in the meeting.
Trav, before you go, when I was on mute, I just thanked Counselor Scott for his work there and the rest of the council who served in that committee and remaining committee members. And everybody who made an effort to beautify our, our city over the holidays. So thank you, Counselor Scott, and to the committee. Go ahead, Trav.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to share my screen here. Just want to confirm that everybody can see the presentation here.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks everyone and Happy New Year. It's been a while since we've had an update on future Sioux State Marine. So just wanted to provide everybody a bit of an update as to what we've been working on over the past couple of years here. And I noticed Counselor Christian has his hand up. So I just want to, before I get started, to see if there's any issues.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just getting myself in the queue.
He's getting.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much. So just as a reminder, Future Sioux State Marine is about implementing the community's collective vision to build a city where people want to visit, live and do business. The Future Sioux State Marine Plan was developed through extensive community consultation from 2016 to 2017, with over 4,800 people being involved, including youth. Following the conclusion of the plan, both the city and Fednor committed funds towards the implementation and a team was hired in 2018. The project continues to date with Fednor graciously providing an extension to December 2023 to account for the implicated complications that arose from COVID. In terms of implementing the plan, we know through best practices that the only way to achieve resilience in the community is to look at a four pillar approach. And in doing so, through Future Sioux State Marine, we've identified the pillar of cultural vitality, economic growth and diversity, environmental sustainability and social equity. Through those four pillars, we've identified eight overarching goals that we aim to achieve throughout the project. To date, we have a number of exciting projects that have been completed and others that are currently in progress. By establishing a framework for future, sorry, by establishing a framework for community development and setting clear priorities, Future Sioux State Marine has been able to advance beneficial projects that cross over multiple pillars and overarching goals. Moving forward, the framework and goals of Future Sioux State Marine will guide our community development strategy. Community Development Roundtable will continue to be engaged and provide input on some of the initiatives on a go forward basis. And as we move forward with our community development, economic and tourism strategies, we will ensure that they are fully integrated with the principles of Future Sioux State Marine. In order to assist us with implementing these plans, we have transitioned a number of the Future SSM project roles into permanent full time positions within the municipality. As a quick overview of some of the high level of community outcomes that we've had to date by pillar, I'll just run through this following list. In terms of cultural vitality, we've established the new Cultural Vitality Committee and increased the funding for local arts organizations by 53, from 53,000 up to 400 or 144,000. And we've established numerous collaborations with various partners around the community. In terms of economic growth and diversity, despite the pandemic, we've had major growth projects announced, including projects from Algoa Steel, the PUC and Tenares. With respect to environmental sustainability, council endorsed the Community GHG Reduction Plan and also retained a full time dedicated position for environmental sustainability and established an Environmental Sustainability Committee. With respect to social equity, we've recently concluded the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. We've installed a Pride Crosswalk and we've established a social equity program that is included as part of the Community Development Fund. As we move on towards our eight overarching goals, we have launched numerous promotional campaigns for the purpose of attracting new residents and businesses to the community, all under the banner of our new brand. And we most recently received funding to assist with the attraction of healthcare professionals to the city. As we move to refocus our economic and community development, we have integrated and migrated all economic development and tourism staff into the city and ensured that their work now aligns with the goals and principles of Future Sioux State Marine. As we move to build our labor force, staff have worked directly with local industry and partners to find skilled labor to meet their needs. And we've also engaged in the development of the R3 strategy, which we intend to move forward. We've also hosted external job fairs and provided to support for employers on an ongoing basis. As we move to invite immigration and welcome newcomers, we've established the RNP program and continue to advance it with making over 120 positive recommendations for the community. We've also integrated the reporting structure of the local immigration partnership within the Community Development Department and have received, most recently, funding from Fednor to assist with the implementation of the RNP program. Moving on to the goals, you know, I'd like to claim success for the growth of post-secondary institutions. But in perfect honesty, this, both Sioux College and Algoa U have done a phenomenal job on their own. We have provided assistance with some marketing and also dedicated community development funds to Algoa U and Sioux College to support the city studio project as well as an engineering program at Sioux College. We continue to advance our indigenous relationships through the Boarding Advisory Circle and have engaged with our indigenous partners on numerous projects throughout the duration of Future Sioux State Marine. We work to improve our community well being through the expansion of our mountain bike trail networks, the installation of kayak docks along the Saint Mary's River and bus services now to Pointe de Shane. There's ongoing work occurring related to the revitalization of the downtown with the redevelopment of Bay Street, the construction of the downtown plaza, the streetscape design for Queen Street and Spring and the establishment of Downtown Safety Pilot Program. In terms of some high level data points, Future Sioux State Marine has led the attraction of Rolling Picture Company to the city. And that has resulted in approximately $1 million investment in the community to date. And I had identified six staff hired locally, but just on Friday found out that they've hired a couple more, so great news. And they are also continuing to look at what other opportunities they can bring to the community. In addition to this, Future Sioux State Marine staff have secured over $1.6 million in federal and provincial grants for the city and community, including 425,000 in grants for local social services and indigenous organizations, approximately 135,000 in grants for environmental initiatives, just over $1 million in grants to support economic development and tourism and 75,000 for the recruitment of, to assist with the recruitment of medical professionals. In addition to this, staff have completed the following community plans, including the cultural plan, the greenhouse gas emissions plan, the community safety and well being plan, the mountain bike trail master plan, a feasibility study specific to the Kinsman Center, and are also in the process, as mentioned previously, of implementing the RNP plan with over 120 candidates recommended and direct support to companies in terms of the recruitment and placement of skilled labor. So with that, I'll stop my presentation. I know that there's a far more extensive one included with the council report.
So thank you, Travis. Yeah, I do know that the, the report that was provided was very extensive and I'm sure council reviewed it. So we have some hands up here and we will go to those. I'm just going to ask you, Counselor Christian and Counselor Shoemaker, if you can just take your hands down so I can move Counselor Dufour onto this screen. He's joined us now, but I can't move him while you're hands up. And then I'll, I'll, I'll come to you in that specific order. Okay, so Counselor Christian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Travis, first of all, thank you very much, in particular for one item that you mentioned. And that's the job creation from the film company moving to Sioux State Marine. Thank you. It's a hard number that, that council appreciates and can understand. A couple of questions though, that I have, and if somewhere in the documentation, the answers are in there, I apologize, but I didn't see it. When it comes to the marketing activities and promotions, beside, and, and by the way, you know, the, the McLean's Magazine and all of that advertising, that's good stuff, that's specific and we're making the effort. But to those, to that point, besides the views and the hits, is there any way to quantify what we're getting for the dollars? In other words, what's our return on investment? Is it too early to make that call or is it information that simply hasn't been provided?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, in terms of return on investment, just to clarify, are you looking towards how many individuals that we've been able to attract? Okay, so to clarify that, yes, that is one that we have been looking at. It is a challenge to collect that information without the census being complete.
Right.
We do have some positive indications that we've seen. Most recently, there was an article that was in the National Post that was a result of data that was collected from U-Haul. And that indicated that Sioux State Marine was number 12 on the list out of communities within Canada that saw the greatest growth in terms of individuals moving to, to a community in 2021. The other way that we were able to collect some data last year was through the implementation of the Adventure Pass. So if you recall correctly, those that moved here after June 1, were able to apply to the Adventure Pass and receive $500 towards any outdoor activity of their desire or product for that. So since June 1 of last year, we had a total of 40, 40 Adventure Passes that were passed out to, to newcomers to the community. And, you know, beyond that, we had outreach from significantly more individuals than that. So, you know, I think that's great news for the last six months of last year.
Thank you. You actually answered my second question, which was how many passes have we actually implemented? Again, I, I think that's, that's information that council really appreciates having. I have one further question, actually have two more questions if you, if you don't mind. Under movie production, notice that the numbers were down significantly in 2020. The numbers for the year prior and the year after were impressive. We have any indication as to why the numbers were so, so low in 2020?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. So we've been in this too long, it's now getting into two years, but 2020 was the first significant year of COVID. And the lockdown really impacted the film industry. There was a lot, a, a real drop in terms of productions and that's, that's the reason.
Fair enough. Okay, I, I think that's it for my question. I, I just want to say, you know, I don't know, I may or may not be part of the next council. I just encourage you, you and the rest of staff, when we're presenting these, continue to provide hard numbers because it's money that's being spent by the community, a lot of it is taxpayer dollars. And I don't think anybody on council has a problem with spending the money as long as we have real hard numbers to back our investments. So thank you very much.
That's Shoemaker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at the slide that had the eight future priorities on it. I just find it, it's the fourth slide, I believe. And I was just wondering, I noticed that number eight on the list is Revitalize Our Downtown. And I'm thinking that these are not in any particular order, but I'm looking for confirmation of that from Mr. Anderson.
Those were not prioritized on a one to eight basis. They were identified by the Future Sioux State Marine Working Groups and Committees as eight overarching priorities.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Did you have anything else, Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you.
So I have Counselor Hillsinger, then Counselor Bruni, and then Counselor Vezo Allen, and then Counselor Gardi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, while I do understand that in certain ways, the census affects the overall goal. Before I got to council, I, I was part of this, of the group that worked on this project. And I know it was very important to me and it was very important to others that this overarching goal, we want Sioux State Marine to be a vibrant city with a population of 100,000 people investing by 2037. We'll invest in our people, celebrate our place and we'll create prosperity. So that isn't sort of directly in any way spoken to in your report. And I know you're trying to give us an update and I appreciate that. There's certainly a lot of work has gone on. It's a very, I don't know, I guess that it's really great to see, having worked through that, that this, that this project did not sit on a shelf and that all of you and the staff have taken up and taken so much effort to actually do something with it, to turn a plan into action. So crucial, but in terms of this overarching goal and us getting to that 100,000, how, when do you think we could get a sense of where we are on that? And how do you see us looking at, at attacking that going forward?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. First, I'd like to thank you for bringing up the, the goal of 100,000 people by 2037. You know, it's often lost on us that this is a 20 year plan, started in 2017 and we are going to 2037. In terms of, you know, to your direct question related to tracking individuals that have relocated here, we are looking at the census data and we will, you know, obviously update as those numbers become available. I think the tricky thing for us is, as I had mentioned, Counselor Christian, related to the Adventure Passes, we see, we saw a number of individuals that have relocated here after the census was complete. In efforts to try to look at different modes that we could collect this information, we have reached out to various community partners, including individuals that could conduct polls on behalf of us through media partners, what have you. They've brought up issues in terms of the validity of those polls and being able to capture a representative audience. So at this point, we're still looking into other means to collect this information, but are very anxious to get a copy of the, the census once it's released.
Okay, thanks Travis.
Okay, is that it for you, Counselor Hillsinger?
Yes.
Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to Travis. Travis, $75,000 was, was put into for the recruitment of medical professionals. As Counselor Christian said earlier regarding numbers and facts, do we have any numbers? How many recruitments Future Sioux State Marine has brought in?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. The funding was received late last year. We've been working with physician recruitment and other partners to begin allocating those funds. So we've, to be perfectly honest, just, just started the, the marketing efforts there. So we don't have any direct numbers allocated to that. We are, you know, proud to say that we are trying to work a lot more closely with the, the fantastic team within Physician Recruitment. And it's something that I think we both, both groups see a lot of benefit in.
Okay, thank you. And second question regarding community, community development plan. It says that you've be given from Fednor an extension to December 23 to complete the projects with the pandemic. Are you still confident that these projects would be completed by, by then?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. Yes, we are looking at, the project has been extended to December 2023, which gives us, you know, for lack of a better term, ample breathing room to make sure that we, you know, take the appropriate time to complete these projects. And I'm sure that we will have them all wrapped up by that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next, I have Counselor Vezo Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to, I'm having, I can't see him on my screen, so I'm hoping he's still there. To Travis, Travis, my question is about the Community Safety and Wellbeing Report. It's pretty extensive and I mean, the, there's over 50 agencies that were part of it. And it really touches on a lot of, of social and issues that, health issues that we sort of encounter on a, on a daily basis. Is there going to be through police services, a rollout or a community consultation? So that people are aware of the report, who's responsible and all the different sections of it in terms of poverty reduction, you know, mental health and addictions and all that type of thing. I haven't seen anything yet across the Social Equity Committee come through. So is there a plan to roll this out so that our broader communities are aware that there is a plan and who's responsible for it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezno Allen. Great question. You know, a lot of credit for the, the development of the plan goes to Lauren Docstater, who was working with the DSAP. She has since transitioned elsewhere. There was a fair amount of community consultation that occurred during the development of the plan. But I appreciate that there is likely the need to, to follow up on that matter. And it will be something that I will be discussing with Mike Natto and the police services to, to get a better sense of what the next steps need to be to ensure that plan is front and center with, with the community and with those that are responsible for implementing.
Yeah, and we do have a social equity coordinator now and we didn't have a meeting in December. So that's always something that I'm willing to bring up at the Social Equity Committee. And I can also bring that up at Police Services as well. But I think it's important to have it published out to the public so that they're aware that we do have a plan and all the different stakeholders that are involved. So thank you very much for the contribution to that as well. Nothing further.
Okay, so Counselor Gardi. Okay, so councillor Garty.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Trav, for the update. I was just wanting, Mr. Anderson, if you would be able to kind of update us, if at all, on what's going on with that steam center you guys brought forward to us probably five, six months ago now? Is there anything to report on that? Any bit of progress?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Garty. Yes, we've recently concluded the consultation process with respect to that study. We engaged with another number of community partners and partners outside of the community in terms of their input in terms of programming and location for that facility. We're currently in the process of identifying potential locations. Understanding that this is a feasibility, we won't be constructing these at this time, but identifying locations for potential design options for a facility, as well as flushing out more of the programming that will occur as part of the the steam center. And a lot of that is a matter of taking the input that we received through the consultation and distilling it down to actual programming that could be brought forth there. In speaking with Tom Barron, I had a conversation about this earlier today, and we envisioned bringing that forward back to council most likely in May of this this year.
Thanks, Travis. Is there one question? You you highlighted some efforts that you guys have to kind of get the word, that you guys used to get the kind of word out to about what's going on with Future Sioux State Marine and in the Sioux, the the welcome to Sioux State Marine social media account, I think it's Facebook? Do you find traffic, a lot of traffic is from out of town or out of the region, or is it a lot of local or a mix there or like a fifty fifty mix thereof? Just wondering if that's getting out to the broader region outside of Sioux State Marine?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Garty. I would say if I monitor that account, so I would say probably at least seventy percent, if not more, from out of town. There's a lot of engagement there with individuals reaching out, trying to find out more information about the Sioux. You know, potential RNP candidates inquiring about job availability. You know, those types of questions that come through the inbox on that site. So I think we are definitely reaching out to a number of individuals outside of the community. And I would also say, you know, we had an Instagram site that was developed as part of that since transition to tourism, but we're down to forty forty six percent local. So you're seeing, you know, a greater transition to out of town followers, which is great.
Thanks, Trav. You and the rest of the bunch of future Sioux State Marine are doing a lot of vital work. And if this work doesn't get done, the city doesn't grow. So thanks for that.
Thank you, councillor Garty. Anybody else? So I'm just reiterate those positive comments. Thank you to really all the staff here that are working on this project, you know, Trav, you're you're lead, but there there's a lot of hands on deck, and you've done a lot of great work to help move our community forward. Community development is a critical thing that we should be doing. And it's great to have a roadmap so that it's clear what we're going to do, and it's clear so we can get partners on side and move forward together. So so thank you. I think I think we're seeing some real positive benefits and positive issues of all that all that work.
Thank you.
Adam Clerk, I think we can move on.
That will take us to the consent portion of the agenda.
Okay, so staff, I saw staff wrap consent. I saw councillor Schumaker's hand first, and councillor Garty. So we'll go on that one. Councillor Schumaker?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Six point two downtown weekend street closures.
Okay.
I have comments on this, not questions, but I wanted to I was disappointed in the report, not not the written report itself from from Madison. I can understand where that came from. However, in in the fact that this is how the report came back, the the motion that councillor Hollingsworth and I brought a number of years ago. It was twenty seventeen, in fact, so we're five years beyond the the date that we asked for this. Didn't ask that the issue be handed off entirely to the Downtown Association, let them make the decision. It asked, the streets are ours and we can close them as we as we see fit, and we have a role to play in downtown development. And so it asked that we get input from the Downtown Association and come to council with a report on feasibility of this. What instead was done was the decision was passed off to the Downtown Association to make for us. And what they came back with, instead of finding a way to make it work, was a laundry list of reasons it might not work. I don't I don't, that's not the way I operate. I'm always looking to see how we can make it work, what obstacles we have to overcome. But what they came up with was simply a list of obstacles and no no way that we could overcome them. So that's that was disappointing from the perspective of Downtown Association. The fact that staff essentially passed off the decision to the Downtown Association to make was also disappointing. I would agree with with kind of the the general thrust of the report that during COVID, during the lockdowns, it's not the time to implement this. However, this was asked for long before the word COVID entered our 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 dictionary and ought to have been done already. The report ought to have come back to us, and I wish it would have been a more thorough look at how we could make it happen as opposed to why it can't happen. Thank you. Those are my comments on this report.
Thank you. Councillor Garty, were you on the same matter? So I think I see, is it your hand up councillor Hillsinger? Go ahead.
I was going to say pretty much what councillor Schumaker said, just in a slightly different way, which was so when can this come back with the how we could make these things happen, if it's a staged approach or whatever would make sense? When could we see this happening? That is, that's my question.
I'm sure I'm not sure I'm clear on your question, councillor Hillsinger.
So council, this could be brought back and other ideas could come back for future consideration. The concerns of the Downtown Association, plus, you know, how we're all going to come together so that we can make a program like this work. What would be the timeline on taking it back, using some of the suggestions that councillor Schumaker made, and coming back with a here's how we could make this happen, and here could be the result of it?
I'll go to the the CEO and then he can delve into the question.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Hillsinger. Essentially, what you're requesting would just require a new resolution back to staff to look at it just to demonstrate that all of or a majority of council was in favor of that. You can certainly do that by referring this matter back to staff if you want to. You and councillor Schumaker want to move and suck or something.
Mr. CEO, I think I think what she's asking is how long would it take to return that? So if it's, if it is referred back to staff, what would this staff see as the turnaround time on getting it back to council? Am I correct in that regard, councillor Hillsinger?
Yes, yes, in that we're moving forward in a positive way and figuring out how to make this work. Whether it's in a staged approach, whether it's as it was written specifically in the motion that councillor Schumaker and councillor Hollingsworth put together, which dealt with closing weekends or Fridays and Saturdays between a period of time, like what? How do we get past the obstacles to make this happen? And if it means it has to be a new motion that gets referred back, I thought I'm not very good at these things. I thought that we could just, it does indicate here it could come back for future consideration. So does that have to formally be put in place for that to happen? And if so, we'll work on that.
The the report, I'm just looking in the analysis section of the report right now, and certainly it talks about if we're looking at it again, we need to get past the pandemic to truly assess it. And that's probably a bit of a challenge because we never thought we'd be in a fifth wave and two years into it. So we we don't know what's coming. I would say we could bring this back and for future considerations, once we got post pandemic and once we got or had the ability to look at what we were going to do and who we might be doing the activities with. Right now, the city doesn't directly program the downtown. Certainly, once the downtown plaza is built, we will have a much stronger role in programming of the downtown. But the Downtown Association, while I I take what councillor Schumaker's comments were in that the original motion asked for input, not a decision. Right now, though, the Downtown Association is our strongest actual entity that we partner with in downtown activities.
I'll just, I'll leave it, I'll leave it there. I think you see certainly from a few of us the the interest in proceeding or making this become a reality in some way, way, shape, or form. I do understand that the pandemic is causing issues, but you know, we could be planning now for next summer, these kinds of things. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you, Mr. CEO.
I point out to council that the resolution, and I'm looking at it now, it asked staff to examine the possibility of closing it. It wasn't, it wasn't a directive to 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 make this happen. So I I think if we were going to refer it back to staff, we'd have to be clear as a council on what our expectations are. And I certainly wouldn't want to direct that we make it happen if we currently have the level of buy in that it appears we have from the Downtown Association. So if you want to bring a referral motion, or if you want to refer this back, I would suggest that you 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 consider it, and you bring a motion to our next meeting with some direction on on what you're looking for, because in this motion, you ask them to examine the possibility. And while I think there's, it's completely legitimate to have opinions on the degree to what that, how that was done, how that was done, and the degree to which it was done. You know, I I think to some degree, what they're saying is it's not something we should be doing right now. And I don't know if their opinion would change in that respect if we referred back to them. So I would suggest if you want to go further on this, you you consider this report and put together a motion, and we can have a as a council, a fulsome debate on it at our next meeting. Councillor Vazwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just just a comment on both the report and the report back from the Downtown Association. So I have a lot of experience in the closures from, you know, doing Busker Fest to being part of the multi closures that we've done for different things, all the downtown street parties and things like that. So I do know in the past that there was a membership was given a, you know, they they did tally as to who would be interested in the closures and who wasn't. And I I have found with as someone who's applied to get streets closed, there's always, you know, people for and people against. So I think, you know, that's something that as council we need to consider because our downtown is a lot of small independent businesses. And for some of them, street closures is not something they're interested in, and for others, they they love it. So I think we need to consider that. And also in the wake of the pandemic, also, it's something that I don't think we can make any decisions on. I can only give some random feedback from Moonlight Magic is that most people said they wish the streets were open because the weather was not the greatest. And they would have preferred if they could have been in their vehicles and gone block to block. So I think that's also something we need to consider as a four season community. But I think there definitely could be some some progress with this. But I think at this time, I agree with C A White that in a pandemic, planning street closures and gatherings, we don't know. I don't think we thought that we would be two years in right now. And I think it's something that we need to consider after and also take a look at events in the past and learning from best practices that we've learned from say, our last street parties and things like that, and Hound home openers. I'm not saying that that it's something that can't happen, but it is an enormous amount of work. And I think some of the concerns from the Downtown Association are really valid because they really do not have the staffing power for that type of event at this time. So that's that's all I'd like to my input from both being a downtown business owner before, and I do sit on the board.
Any other comments, council? Councillor Schumaker, do you have any other matters? Sorry, councillor Christian, you have a matter? Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand what everybody's saying here. It seems to me that we're at a place right now where, you know, the the plaza is going in. I don't see us waiting. I do think that we could take the concerns of the Downtown Association and to councillor Schumaker's point, work through those and have something in our back pocket that we could utilize as far as street closures a plan so that when the pandemic is over, we can move forward. It seems to me the talk is we really shouldn't be, if I understand it correctly, we really shouldn't be planning anything because we're in a pandemic. I think we can move forward with an idea and a plan and implement it when the time is right, considering that we are going to have a plaza that could be fully utilized for 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 activities, et cetera, for programming. So I appreciate all the comments that are made, but I don't think that we need to sit quietly right now. I think a resolution being brought forward would be a good idea so that we could at least conceptualize what it is we want when the time is appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Schumaker, do you have any other matters on consent?
I do. I'll just add to councillor Christian's remarks there that it sounds like he's willing to second the motion that I'm drafting for a coming council meeting. So it's half drafted already. My next matter on consent, Mr. Mayor, is the new development cost options. Matter six point eight.
Go ahead.
Again, just comments on this. I I remember this motion came forward sometime mid last year, and at the time, I had concerns that it would inevitably open the door again to development charges. The report was thorough. Thank you, Mr. McConnell, for for going through it. But it has essentially said that development cost, development charges are the best path forward on on these other options that were looked at. And so I was of the view then that development charges are are a detriment to our development in our city. I remain of that view and would just like to I realize the report is for information, so they're not asking us to implement development charges by any way, shape, or form here. But any effort to do so would be met with stiff resistance on my part.
Anybody else on that agenda, item matter six eight? Councillor Schumaker, is that the extent of your list, or do you have anything else?
That was all for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Garty, I had you next on consent.
Now, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Six point one zero, the Northern Ontario Resource Development Support Fund. Through you, I guess, to maybe, I don't know who's on the line, Mr. Elliott, I guess. Mr. Elliott, this is, you know, this is good news. I'm 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 happy that it's been directed potentially through to Core Road West on Second Line to Allen Side Road. Since it was put out there, I can tell you that I've received a few phone calls of people who live along that stretch of road who think it's a bit overdue and are very happy that this is something that's being considered. Could you give us a little bit back, a bit of background as to the funding precisely? Because there were some questions that I couldn't answer. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor to councillor Garty, the funding, it's a four hundred thousand dollar funding. I think it's a multi year fund, so we may get some more next year for, we could resurface in separate phases. Our view is that it will assist us in resurfacing this portion. It won't pay for the whole thing. But it will go a long way to making the project much much more cost effective for us, and we can use that money that's displaced. We can we can use it on other resurfacing projects.
Well, that's good. That's welcome assistance from the province. Thanks, Mr. Elliott. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Two thousand six ten. Okay, so I see Nero and Bruni. Go ahead. Nero and Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Elliott, so based on your previous comment, is the intention to do that stretch of Second Line in phases?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero, yes, I would think it would be phased probably at least in two sections. One would be between Core Road and Ghulie, and the other would be between Ghulie Core Road and Gully, and the other would be between Gully and Allen Side Road.
Okay, thank you. And and as councillor Corey said, I'm glad to see this on the agenda. Um, I too have had many, many calls from that area and uh, in the area of Edison, the area of Farewell Terrace, where uh, public works just can't do it much more with the road until it's just resurfaced. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Nero. Councillor Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mr. Elliott, uh, first question. Uh, what, when was part of Second Line from People's Road to Farewell Terrace uh, completed? When was the last time those, it was re- reconstructed?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Rooney, I'm gonna say that was reconstructed in, or around two thousand four, two thousand five.
Okay, and what about from Farewell Terrace to Core Road?
That was the year after. So it's either two thousand five or two thousand six.
Okay, good. Uh, I like uh, councillor Nero and councillor Nero, and I'm sure councillor Scott. We're very uh, happy that uh, this new portion will be uh, resurfaced. It's much needed, and I'm sure the residents are, will be very happy about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Rooney, do you have anybody else on uh, six ten? Seeing none, councillor Gardi, do you have anything else?
I do not. Thanks.
We have any other matters on consent, council? Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a quick question on six point seven, the Tourism Development Fund. Mr. Mayor to uh, Mr. Anderson. Uh, I appreciate the report. I love ideas like this. This is awesome to see. I was kind of digging around, so this this gentleman that was mentioned, forgive me, I forget his name. Um, Lawrence Foster definitely does have a good reputation around. That's great to see. I just have a question. So I know it says the goal for the first year is to attract two hundred, three hundred competitors with fi- uh, fifty to a hundred from out of town. But could we get into a little bit more about like the long term? Is this something that we're gonna run every year? Uh, the Adventure Racing World Championships mentioned in the report was a one-time thing in Corner Brook. So is it something though that we we want to make exclusive to Sault Ste. Marie? Basically running it every year, bringing people in like it. I I just kind of want to get an idea of where like the long term is.
Uh, through you, Mr. Merida, councillor Scott. Um, yes, absolutely. Uh, it's something that we're looking at on an annual basis. And I should be clear that uh, the event is is run by uh, Mr. Lawrence Foster, but that is his intent and that's what uh, he expressed in his application to the Tourism Development Fund. Um, and we're uh, very supportive of it. I mean, it's a a period where we need uh, more tourism, and I think it's a great event and a good opportunity for growth.
Absolutely. I think it's a, it's it's a great thing to see. So he's committed that he would be running this event annually here?
That's his intent. I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a commercial endeavor uh, on his part, but uh, assuming it's uh, it's a sustainable, uh, he intends to run it uh, multiple years.
Perfect. I know that the uh, the crank the shield was a big hit recently. Uh, I don't remember if that was last year. The years all blend now. I don't remember if that was last year or the year before. But uh, I love seeing things like this show off the natural beauty. So great report. Thank you. And uh, I'm happy you could answer that question for me.
Hey, thank you, councillor Scott. Is that the extent of your matters, councillor Scott? Okay, that looks like it's the extent of the consent agenda then, Madam Clerk.
So I have a motion by councillors Christian and Scott, resolved that all the items listed under date January ten, twenty twenty-two, agenda item six. Consent agenda be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Just carried. That brings us to seven one one, Madam Clerk.
That's correct. The COVID update from the Chief Administrative Officer.
Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, it is just an update item for your information. Yeah, excuse me. Uh, as we all know, we are uh, in a modified step two of the reopening phase uh, for uh, it was put in initially for three weeks. We will see how far it gets, but I do want to certainly advise council and the community that we do have contingency plans in place, uh, should uh, some of our areas uh, experience uh, Omicron infection, COVID infection, and we start seeing significant numbers of staff uh, either coming down with the infection or being required to uh, self-isolate uh, for the period of time that's recommended. Uh, it is a challenge because of the uh, lack of testing availability. Uh, we are requiring people to pay good attention to their symptoms. Uh, and we will uh, continue what to work with staff in the community to make sure our services are as unaffected as they can be. The report also notes uh, that uh, just at the time of writing, uh, the province did come out with a uh, new program for businesses that are affected uh, by this most recent step. And so our economic development staff will be working to ensure that local businesses who are affected uh, are certainly aware of the program and facilitate applying for it if need be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. White. Do we have any questions for the CEO? Madam Clerk, so we'll have uh, the vote uh, is up on your screen. All in favor? Thank you. Madam Clerk, once you have that tally, don't, don't move on. I I uh, councillor Dufour has been having a uh, a challenge technically, and he uh, is losing connection as a result of that. He drops off my main screen. I don't see when he comes back. And he was looking to speak or ask some questions on a consent report. I'm gonna give him the opportunity to do that, uh, provided council has no objection on it.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm just waiting for, actually, uh, I need councillor Dufour's vote, councillor Rooney's vote, and councillor Hollingsworth's vote on the COVID report as information. Mr. Bear?
Yes, councillor Hollingsworth?
Um, the um, voting system does not come up on my screen, so please take my verbal as I agree.
Yeah, councillor Hollingsworth was in favor. I think I saw all the hands go up in favor of that.
Okay, then I have uh, a unanimous vote on accepting that report as information.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councillor Dufour dropped off my main screen again, but I'm gonna get him. Okay, councillor Dufour, uh, some, Madam Clerk, before we move on. Councillor Dufour had a question on six eight, and I'm gonna give him the opportunity to ask that. How, councillor Dufour? So I, it would seem to me that he's still having these problems. Uh, councillor Dufour, I see that you're also on by telephone. Can you, maybe you can unmute yourself and just use that uh, that line for the time being? Well, there you go. You're still muted, councillor Dufour.
Star six, I believe.
Yeah, you're unmuted now, but your connection is 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 problematic. You're uh, you're not coming through. Okay, I've I've called. We, we can hear you, councillor Dufour, even though you are unmuted. It, uh, yeah, you're, you're obviously, there's obviously a delay on your end. So hopefully we'll get that sorted out, councillor Dufour. If we do, I will come back to it. In the meantime, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Madam Clerk, you can proceed, and if we get councillor Dufour a good connection here, we'll come back to him.
Okay, under agenda item eight point one, hub trail connection of a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero. Whereas at the November fifteen, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, council approved a reconfiguration of the hub trail in the area of Queen Street and Andrews Street. And whereas since twenty eighteen, the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie has been discussing a hub trail connection to the Old West End and James Street area. And whereas the number of expansions or realignments of the hub trail have been brought before city council since twenty eighteen, but a hub trail connection to the Old West End and James Street area has not yet been brought before city council. And whereas the city of Sault Ste. Marie is undertaking an active transportation master plan at this time, now therefore be it resolved that council declared the Old West End and James Street area connection to be the highest priority for future spending on the hub trail and direct staff to prepare a route for such a connection in anticipation of an available funding.
Councillor Shoemaker, you want to speak to this?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is one that has been uh, bandied around for some time, a connection to James. Bound on Queen. Um, but it seemed, you know, we waited for it and then a couple of different uh, trail proposals came forward and and this one kind of got bumped down the list, including the recent realignment of the hub trail along Huron Street. So um, essentially, all this does is ensures that in our tran- uh, uh, active transportation master plan, this project is considered the highest priority of council, uh, so that the next available funding envelope that um, uh, is opened, we can uh, have our ducks in a row to to make that connection and to to, you know, reattach uh, part of our community that that really has been uh, uh, isolated by the in, the the uh, construction carmen's way, which has been, you know, twenty some years ago. But uh, it really did cut off that neighborhood from the rest of the area. So uh, this would be a good way to to bring them back into uh, having a a uneasy and 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 safe connection into the downtown area. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Nero, did you want to speak to that?
Uh, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, just pleased that I could second this resolution, and I certainly agree with councillor Shoemaker that we need to get this part of the city, the Jamestown, James Street area uh, connected to to the main hub trail. So we probably need to see it sooner than later. Thank you.
Any other comments from councillor or good councillor Hill singer, councillor Hill singer, then councillor Gardi?
Thank you. Um, I'd like to ask a question to, if, I don't know if it's Mr. McConnell or Mr. Anderson with regards to the plan in general. I I just, I just want and anybody, okay, I'll ask the question and we can figure that out. So, um, thank you, Mr. McConnell. Um, so councillor Shoemaker, I I wish I had, um, I intended to to reach out to you, uh, just to to um, share a thought with you. Um, and while I certainly think that this is a very good idea, I'm really struggling with the nature of calling something the highest priority before an a comprehensive uh, transportation. It is a priority in my mind, but to make it the highest priority, um, when we're about to undergo a plan that's going to be comprehensive and all encompassing in terms of how we can improve um, active transportation across our community. And so, um, uh, I I really want to be supportive. Um, Mr. McConnell, could you address that? Please?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, certainly, uh, I I don't think anyone disagrees that this is an important priority for the city. Uh, we have just retained the services of uh, extremely well-qualified consulting company to do a comprehensive plan for the city as a whole. Uh, regardless of the funding or of the, of the findings of that plan, and I'm sure that you know, James Street will be very close to, if not at the top of the plan, council always has the ability to simply say, no, this is what we want to do first. And that's what we're gonna find, and that's what we're gonna do. And I think, um, you know, and and that's fair. That's council's job. The one thing that I would ask council keep in mind is that many of the projects we've done recently, like Bay Street, and uh, you know, the extension of the hub trail along Third Line down to Black Road with that project are done as part of other capital works projects, planning, engineering, public works. We all work together very closely. And there's considerable cost savings involved with those. Uh, and that's just a consideration that staff make, and then we bring that information forward to council when council's making a decision. But yes, I mean, the the report's going to look at the city as a whole. It's gonna tell us what our best opportunities are, and council always has the ability to say, this is what we want to do first.
Okay, thanks, Mr. McConnell. That's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill singer. Councillor Gardi?
Yeah, so I appreciate Mr. McConnell's comments. These, this motion just seems that we're preempting kind of the advice or direction that kind of Mr. McConnell spoke of. We're setting the priority prior to the plan coming back. There's nothing to say that we can't, once it does come back. Um, I think it is a priority. I don't know if I would qualify it as the highest priority as it relates to the hub trail. Um, I won't be supporting it. Thanks.
So council, I'll just offer my thoughts and and then we can wrap it up if no one else has any. Uh, I I won't be supporting the motion. I I think we're gaming the system a little bit here. We 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 uh, have asked for this study to be done. The study will be done. We'll get that assessment. That assessment will come back to us. And then we can prioritize that any way we see fit. Uh, that that is our, uh, it's our prerogative and we have a right to do that. But I I don't see it being responsible to prioritize it in advance. I think, I think you're essentially influencing kind of this, the study prior to the study being done. I think we should get the fullness of the information returned to us. And let's say it comes back second or it comes back third. That doesn't mean we can't do it first for political reasons or for policy reasons that we we think are more important. Uh, but to me, I don't know that you want to start a study by telling the people that will be doing the study uh, what the conclusion has to be at the end of the study. So I might well, councillor Shoemaker, support uh, at the end of the study, uh, i- if it actually returns this term. I might well support moving this as the top priority. But I wouldn't be comfortable doing that in a vacuum. And I think that's what we're doing today. I think we're doing it in a vacuum because we don't have a list of all of the the different priorities and the assessments that uh, the independent party that we're hired to do this would would return for us. Any other comments on the motion, council? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. You can leave your hand up so I can count. So we have councillor Vezel Allen, councillor Shoemaker, councillor Rooney, councillor Nero, councillor Scott, councillor Christian, councillor Hollingsworth, opposed to the motion, councillor Gardi, myself, and councillor Hill singer. Motion passes.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have yourself, councillor Gardi, and councillor Hillsinger uh, voting in the negative. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's eight to three.
That brings us to eight point two.
Yes, yes, I have a motion by councillors Hollingsworth and Hillsinger. Whereas the life expectancy of northern residents is more than two years lower than the Ontario average. And one person in eight across the north does not have access to a family doctor. And this represents the failure of healthcare in Northern Ontario. And whereas these Northern Ontario communities advocate for equitable healthcare, especially for underserved rural indigenous and Francophone communities in Northern Ontario. And whereas finding ways to encourage more physicians and healthcare professionals to stay and work in northern communities is contributing to a crisis for citizens in the north. And whereas although highly successful at providing doctors for Northern Ontario, the Northern Ontario School of Medicine has fewer healthcare professional spots than the rest of Ontario medical schools. And it would take at a minimum five No Som graduating classes at sixty-four physicians per year to address the current shortage. Now therefore be it resolved that with the announcement of No Som becoming a freestanding university, the city of Sault Ste. Marie wishes to strongly request that the provincial government and the Ontario Medical Association immediately expand No Som's capacity to meet the needs of Northern Ontario with added M D positions, residency positions, and clinical teaching funding to the Northern Ontario Academic Medicine Association. Further, that a copy of this motion be forwarded to Premier Doug Ford, Minister of Colleges and Universities Jill Dunlop, Minister of Health Christian Elliott, M P P Ross Romano, Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Ontario Medical Association, Northern Ontario School of Medicine, Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, Northern Ontario Academic Medicine Association, and the leaders of the opposition parties of Ontario.
Okay, councillor Hollingsworth, go ahead.
Thank you. I trust everyone can hear me. Okay. First, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to all our healthcare professionals for supporting our patients or community through this crisis of the pandemic. But um, also I want to reach out and say thank you to councillor Hillsinger for being a seconder on this and for all of her hard work on being the chairperson for the recruitment uh, committee. She knows it um, very, very well of the stress on our healthcare system not having these additional um, physicians. No Som, as most of you know, um, have and continues to work very hard to ensure that our healthcare network for our community of Sault Ste. Marie and for Northern Ontario grows and strengthens. If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to share some really interesting stats, three main stats um, with regards to the successes that No Som has achieved in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty, there were seven hundred or up to twenty twenty, there were seven hundred and eighty uh, M D graduates. Basically, um, six hundred and ninety-two residents have completed training at No Som. More than half of these health professionals have stayed. More than half of these health professionals have stayed in Northern Ontario. So the No Som is doing a very good job in tracking um, the number of students going into our Northern Ontario Medical School and actually staying in Ontario. That's a big success. If overall, No Som has been hugely successful, but the uh, in success in retraining, retaining eighty-nine percent of its learners um, in Northern Ontario. Having said that, No Som is making real progress. This motion allowing more students into our Northern Ontario Medical School is a really good start. And it seems to be unfair that they have to fight for extra spots to be equal to the other medical schools in our on province. So hands-on, this is extremely important. Guiding students um, to this school, helping our communities, is what I hope all of us will support um, by saying yes to this motion. I also want to touch on the benefits to our community. Having more medical students going into schools will hopefully come back to benefit us. The other piece I would like to stress is that it goes back to one of our pillars that we mentioned earlier, Mr. Anderson. Having a stronger healthcare network in Sault Ste. Marie also provides job growth. And with regards to that, we are already seeing some job growth with regards to doctors for and promoting research in cancer. I'm bringing all this up because just supporting a few extra spots in our Northern Ontario school creates a bigger promising picture for the healthcare of our community. So having said this, there is no reason why we can't continue to create more opportunities, and there's no reason why we should not be supporting this motion. It's a benefit to all our families, our friends, our community, and mostly Northern Ontario as well. So at this time, thank you for allowing me to bring this to the table, and I look forward to having all of you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hollingsworth. Counsel Hill singer, did you want to add anything?
Um, nothing too much. Thanks, Counselor Hollingsworth, for sharing um, with us and with the community about the success of the school and and that we really do have a unique opportunity here to advocate on our behalf um, as a city uh, to to expand the spaces so that we can, as you mentioned, you know, we do have physician shortage here in Sault Ste. Marie and in Northern Ontario in general. Um, and how we're going to work towards uh, correcting that problem is to um, allow uh, uh, more student placements um, within the school uh, uh, to allow more students to graduate, et cetera. So um, I, we would uh, both of us certainly would, and I know the community at large would really appreciate your support tonight. Thank you.
So thank you both uh, for for bringing this motion. Uh, I think we can all get behind it uh, very earnestly. Northern Territory School of Medicine has helped uh, us address some of the challenges we have in Northern Ontario with access to physicians. But those challenges still exist. Uh, to some degree, they're they're uh, going to continue existing, grow if if uh, we don't do more work to address them. One of the ways we can do that is through uh, No Som and through frankly, No Som uh, having a provincial mandate to expand uh, and provide more seats for students to learn and for students to do go through their different levels of their medical education. So I completely support this. I think it's gonna be critical to not only our region, but uh, healthcare and access to quality healthcare. So uh, all in favor? Motion is carried. I think carried unanimously, Madam Clerk. If 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 you're not reading every for everybody.
Yeah, I didn't have Councilors Dufour or Hollingsworth, but I have it now recorded as unanimous.
Uh, Counsel D four, it looks like he's trying to connect uh, again. I think he just uh, just got back on. So we have you in favor on that, Counsel D four.
I, is that uh, Counselor Hollingsworth's motion about uh, Northern Ontario Medical School?
Yes.
Yes, I think that's a great motion, Counselor Hollingsworth.
Okay, under Agenda Item eight point three, a motion by Councilors Shoemaker and Scott. Whereas on January five, twenty twenty-two, the provincial government entered stage-two COVID restrictions requiring, among other things, the closure of indoor dining and reduced capacity in retail settings until at least January twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. And whereas in past lockdowns, the City of Sault Ste. Marie has waived parking fees downtown in an effort to assist business in the downtown core to the greatest degree possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Sault Ste. Marie waived downtown paid parking until the provincial restrictions on businesses are lifted.
Counsel Shoemaker.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Pretty straightforward uh, resolution, I I believe. Uh, uh, I'm not saying this will um, cure what uh, is currently ailing uh, our our small businesses in town who are suffering under uh, the the strain of of another lockdown, which I understand medical reasons for, but no doubt has a a a hard impact on uh, on their ability to draw in business, uh, draw in customers. Um, this is just one, hopefully, minor way in which we can, you know, lend a lend a hand to our businesses who are struggling for the next uh, sixteen days or whatever it is until the lockdown ends. Uh, hopefully, it does offer some assistance. Uh, I think we need to do what we can to assist businesses. If the lockdowns are further extended, I I think you'll see further efforts to try and um, try and mitigate the impacts of them, at least from my perspective. But uh, this is one, I think, minor way in which we can lend a small helping hand.
Okay. Um, I agree with Counsel Shoemaker. Do we have any other comments on the motion? No, all in favor? Motion carried, I think, again unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and that will take us to bylaws. Have a motion by Councilors Christian and Gardi, resolved that all bylaws under Item eleven of the agenda under date January ten, twenty twenty-two be approved?
All in favor? Motion's carried.
And a motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Scott, resolved that this council move into closed session to discuss one item relating to a plan to be applied to negotiations. Further be it resolved that should the said closed session be adjourned, the council may reconvene in closed session to discuss the same matter without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Motion carried.
And a motion by Councilors Hollingsworth and Scott that this council now adjourn.
Thank you, counsel.
And live session and call the meeting to order.
Beverly, just a note, we do have uh, David Hellwig joining us as a guest today. I believe that's the only guest that we do have.
Okay. Hello, David. Thank you for joining us today. I, so do you guys have roll call there?
Yeah, so we just uh, quickly, we have all board members um, that are uh, active on the board with uh, obviously uh, broad due names still listed, but will be uh, absent and removed come the new year.
Excellent. Uh, do I have a mover for approval of the minutes from the November twenty-fifth meeting?
It's Kelly.
Kelly uh, to move, and a seconder, Lawrence? All in favor? Minutes carried. Uh, does anyone have a declaration of pecuniary interest today? Lawrence?
Yes, I'm involved with the Beaver Fuser Marathon, which is on our um, minute, or sorry, it's on our agenda for today, so I'll excuse myself at the appropriate time.
Excellent. Thank you for advising of.